Look for a motion to adopt the agenda. Uh, one thing in front of you is you do have the, there's a correction on the dates, which is uh, number three under me, so that will be um, the approval of contract for building official zoning administrator, Article two, sections one and two. If that is the only change, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion?
Thank you Jed. Thank you April. Thank you for the discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone. We'll start off tonight with public participation. And we have Jaclyn.
Shoden.
Shoden? Jaclyn Shoden, uh, come on up here. Just start by saying that uh, you get five minutes.
This will probably only take me two minutes.
Perfect, good evening.
But um, I happen to be in town and um, I'm here to advocate for the um, residents at Heritage Manor. Okay, I wanna be advocate for them. They um, the, if you, I see, believe you have a picture here. This is um, the bottom wing, or the bottom picture is the wing that faces east. And those residents, um, this is their view of the beautiful lake that you have here. And um, my request is, is it possible for the, the city to kinda clean that area up a little bit? I'm not asking to pull trees out, I'm not asking to do a huge landscaping. Um, if you see the top picture, you can just see, you know, it's clean and yes, this was taken today, okay? So the leaves are off, so it's a little bit more, you know, but, there, you can see even underneath, there's not that much foliage, there's not much, you know, brush. If it could be cleaned up, um, to look something similar like it is just down the road. The residents there, you know, this is their livelihood, this is their entertainment. Uh, my dad's ninety-six years old, he's found in mine, he's, he's all there, you can have a great conversation with him. Um, him and others look out the window and they just see, you know, just nothing, you know, in the summertime. So I am not sure if anything can be done, I'm not sure if you can look into this, um, see if some things can be cleaned up so at least it's consistent around the lake. And that's, I guess, what I'm asking, if you will, look into it. Anyway, you can't ask me questions, can you?
Well, we, if anybody asks questions, they absolutely can.
Okay.
You know, um, so i- if, I would be my recommendation to the council, if we do decide to add this onto a working session to discuss, you know, what feelings or thoughts are. Um, you know, not to get into a bunch of back and forth during the public participation. But then, uh, you know, definitely sit down and talk with our, you know, our parks and our supervisors and see what they think and, just to make sure, one, if we do decide to do something, can we, is it okay to start pulling away the foliage and whatnot?
And again, I'm not asking, 'cause I know there's two sides to this, and I'm not asking for this big, I'm just asking, if it can be cleaned up like it is, you know, if they did it down here, why couldn't they kinda do a little bit more further down? So I'm not sure when this was ever done, but if they could just extend that, I guess. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you Jaclyn. Okay, next we have um, Darlene Salo. Good evening Darlene. Just a reminder that we have five minutes for you tonight.
I know. Yeah, is anybody from law enforcement here? No.
No.
Oh, well anyway, on the weekends, um, with the parking lot from eight o'clock at night until two thirty in the morning, there's people there, they're smoking pot and drinking beer. That's what they're doing, that's what the, that area's being used for. And on the opposite side, on East Lake Street where the four-wheel trail is, there's cars that park in there until four in the morning, three of them. I don't get a lot of sleep being the keeper of that parking lot, is a headache. And so are those picnic tables in cannabis. Just so we have that clear, I'm not going away on that. Another thing is law enforcement needs to improve it because now I also have renters across the alley in that rented Morton building. Again, locks don't keep people out, I've had trouble and I don't want anymore. So we need law enforcement there, all of the time, down my alley and around my block, day and night. And in the parking lot area, you need to have somebody from the city come and pick up condoms, 'cause I'm really tired of picking them up. People are screwing on the picnic tables at night and I've watched it. So, now we have that to watch. And the public needs to know that too, it is not child-friendly by any means. And let's see, yeah, cars, that's another thing, in the mornings, they're parked between five o'clock until ten, sometimes till noon. There's two different ones that park there. They're not walking around the lake. I know I walked that lake for forty years, it takes an hour and ten minutes at the worst day, best day forty-five minutes even with a dog. Um, let's see, what else is there on here? Oh, and I'm waiting to hear back that I see Sue just gave me what I'd asked for in regards to the cost of all of those things in front of my property, and only in front of my property. So I'll get back with you on that. So, thank you. But law enforcement would be appreciated, day and night.
Can I ask you a question? Did you call nine-one-one when you see any of this?
No, I called once. Because if I hadn't called them, they would be so tired of listening to me, I don't think they'd answer the phone.
Okay, nine-one-one always answers, so. Alright, council reports. Councilor Halverson, good evening.
Uh, good evening. This past Saturday, I was out at Redhead with Eric Carlson, our project manager, and some of our trail builders looking at some of my new trails. And the Saturday before that, I was at Redhead for the MCA race, which was a very good event, very well attended, lots of, uh, lots of people. That's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you, yeah, so I heard a lot of good things, and it seemed like there was a lot of uh, you know, injuries or anything, maybe a couple of bumps and bruises, but um, you know, weather cooperated for the most part, I believe, right? Except for the Sunday, got a little...
Still got a little rainy, but uh, it was, it went well, I think.
Okay, Councilor Fulton, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, a pair off of uh, Councilor Halverson. October thirteenth, I volunteered up at uh, Redhead with uh, a great group of people up there for the MCA races and my little one helped too, it was pretty cool. Uh, I also attended some trainings with uh, League of Minnesota Cities about AI ethics and um, of uh, so AI ethics and First Amendment and regulations of signs, and land use regulations, and I took a little mini course online for that. And I'm also attending the Fall Forum sessions with the League of Minnesota Cities. Uh, the first one, they just had a digital accessibility for cities, so I can send that out to um, if, if you guys wanted a copy of anything, we could do that. Okay, sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Baki, good evening.
Good evening, great to see you all. Uh, I'm gonna bypass on a report because I have a home volleyball game in Chisholm that I'm hoping I can still get to.
Excellent. Councilor Mika Rahah, good evening.
Good evening, no report.
Alright. Councilor Olivera, good evening.
Good evening, uh, attended the Saturday sewer district meeting, uh, it's budget season, so we're looking through that right now. Uh, Public Utilities Commission meeting, uh, we have the garden meeting, that's moving along pretty well too. Uh, and it, and my election judge duties, we processed four and a half ballots today.
Nice. Yeah, thank you. Um, so myself, I just wanna bring the council up to date or aware, I don't know a lot of what's going on, but um, the Hibbing Council has been meeting a couple times now with the Airport Authority. Um, it seems that um, well, the way that uh, that works over there with the uh, DMR building, the property tax that comes back to that goes to the Airport Authority, the money to fund that project came from the I triple R. So, once the new building gets put up, that could probably change from thirty-five thousand dollars a year in property tax to about sixty, seventy thousand, somewhere in there. Um, the Airport Authority uses that for the projects, they use that for the hangar for lifelink, um, they're gonna have other projects coming up. Uh, but it seems like um, Hibbing might have a thought where that should be going towards them since it's in their district. Again, that's speculation coming from a few of the members on the Airport Authority Board, but um, you know, they have a meeting tonight that, before their council meeting. And they're also talking um, zoning changes, um, and who's gonna be taking that up because of the runway expansion, and questioning on who is the authority for the zoning changes. And the last part of their meeting will be discussing board makeup. Um, some speculation might think that uh, because they contribute eighty-five thousand dollars a year and Chisholm's closer to eighteen thousand, twenty thousand a year, maybe they should have more representation than equal board membership. But this was written in uh, you know, state leg- state legislature, I believe, drew this up. Obviously, our name's on the building too, we're the ones that forego a lot of that, and our taxes also go to pay. So, I'm not sure what percentage-wise it equates to, um, if it is closer to equal. But um, no, I did request that Barrett reach out to me with uh, you know, what's going on at that meeting tonight, and I would think that Hibbing should be reaching out to Chisholm, that would be part of these meetings also, so. I'll be reaching out to Mary Duke to kinda see what is going on over there. Um, quickly, the Veterans Park on the east side of the lake, I'm just gonna say that that is a beau- beautiful park. It is well-used, it is well-maintained, I literally drive by that twelve times a day. I drive by it at two in the morning, four in the morning, with the ambulance calls, we run. Um, I see people utilizing it for picnics, I see people buying food and sitting in their car and just overlooking the lake, 'cause it's a beautiful view. Um, it, it's a great addition to the city and I, I would love to be looking at that across the street from my house compared to what some people could reach out to us and have to look at, so. Um, you know, again, I, I think it's a great thing for the community and I'd love to see more of them. Uh, that being said, I don't believe I have everything, anything else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I got a couple things that uh, about the city hall here.
Okay.
For voting.
Yeah, would you please?
Peter W.
No, I don't. You wanna put that mic closer to your...
Sure. Uh, City Holic Senator Hours here at the Chisholm City Hall for voting. You can come in uh, from Saturday, October twenty-sixth from nine to three, Tuesday, October uh, twenty-ninth from six-thirty AM to seven PM, Saturday, November second, nine AM to three PM, Sunday, November third, nine AM to three PM, and Monday, November fourth, six-thirty AM to five PM. I just wanna let the folks know out there that they can do that, come in and go, um, and that they did extend their hours here. So, and also, um, the Chisholm School Board and the Chisholm City, City Council Candidate Forum is coming up real quick for uh, Monday, October twenty-eighth at six PM, uh, at the Chisholm Senior Citizen Center. And the moderator is uh, Mr. Steve Potts. So I kinda just wanted to let the folks know if they wanted to watch that, they could do that, or they're invited to come.
Absolutely, thank you Councilor. And I saw everybody's admissions in the uh, paper today, very well said. Um, proud to work with all of you. And I do wanna just say one thing, we are missing our um, Administrator tonight and our ambulance director. They just had two long days, three long days, traveling to Seattle. They got back today and they did the inspection of our new ambulance, so we should be looking at receiving that November tenth, so. Alright, moving along. Our Fire Chief, I'm gonna just say tonight that he is uh, setting up for EVOC training. Police Chief, Building Official, Mandy. Public Works, Larry.
No report, Mayor. Well, I, I have. I just, I was gonna let it go, but...
Never let it go.
Okay, just quickly, just quickly. The sweeper's out, I know everyone wants it on the same day, and that was Monday. And um, truly, it's out, I'm running it forty-eight hours a day. I'm running it forty-eight hours a day, and even instead of forty hours, 'cause we have a ten-hour, we have, our, our union folks are, have the ability to work ten, four-tens. So I have an operator on it, uh, four-tens, Monday through Thursday, and then another operator, eight hours on Friday, so. We're running it five days a week and extra, and I know there's leaves, they just fell, you know, and uh, we'll get them. It takes us like, three to four weeks to get through the whole city, and then we'll just, until it snows, we'll just keep getting them, so. But um, you know, really with that, we're just working on flipping of the season and uh, and those other maintenance tasks, you know, we'll be putting on snowplow wings soon and things like that, but uh, the forecast looks good, and uh, and we'll go from there, and the sweeper is out, I assure you every day, so. We'll get there, yep.
Parks, Trails, Rec Director, Bridget, good evening.
Good evening, Council. Um, I'll do this really fast, watch, watch me go, here we go. Um, a- an update on the MCA race, Marty gave a overview, but I have some stats on that. It was fourteen hundred racers and um, with folks in attendance, families and race staff, spectators, it was plus four thousand, so four thousand plus, close to the population of Chisholm. And um, all positive feedback from the MCA, no major injuries. Uh, the, the trails held up well, even though there was rain on Sunday, so that all went spectacularly. Um, I did attend the Arrowhead Coalition of Trails on October sixteenth. This is a new meeting group that started, and uh, this is an open invitation for anybody who is interested in being involved on an action committee for that, but the coalition, the purpose of it is to collectively operationalize our outdoor recreation assets to create an economic renaissance for uh, main streets and major employers. So it was a really great conference where we all came together across the region and talked about how our trails, how we can work together on our trails. Um, I'm on a committee and I'd love for the public or anybody who's interested to join me. Um, so just reach out to me directly. And then two, uh, I did um, speak at a podcast in Ely, it's called What's Up Ely? And the purpose behind that, I was invited to talk about Redhead, but the conversation went a lot, in a lot of different ways, and I ended up talking a lot about how great Chisholm is. So, if you get the opportunity to look up the podcast, What's Up Ely, you'll hear me talking about the, the greatness of Chisholm. And then two, next week is a site visit with FEMA, October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, to hopefully um, move forward with some federal funding on that June um, washout from the storm. That's it, unless there's questions.
Thank you, Bridget. Katie, good evening, Library Supervisor. No, no report? Brian?
Thanks Mayor, I'll try and go as, as quickly as I can, generally I don't have too much of a report, but I did just wanna give an update on some of the blight things that we're doing and some of the developments. So since the last meeting, I have gotten together with some of the city staff, including the chief, uh, our Public Works Director, Stephanie, uh, to kinda go through, uh, some of, uh, we talked about some of the properties we've kinda singled out, or not singled out, but we've identified, uh, four uh, that appear that they're more chronic cases, that we're having a little bit more struggle getting cleaned up. And uh, I'm gonna come back to the city with a proposal to get a couple of civil actions started, so we can start using some of the contempt powers of the court, uh, to try and get some cleanup happening on those properties and try and force some resolution. Um, in connection with that, I, I'm in the very, very early stages. I'm talking to, uh, I represent a number of cities, but I'm talking to prosecutors from other cities uh, around the Iron Range and in St. Louis County. Uh, and I've approached the courts to a limited degree to see if we can't get some special time on the court calendars, so we can get our, our blight cases onto specific calendars with judges who may follow those cases a little bit more closely, so that we could get a little bit more action and a little bit more deep knowledge uh, from the folks that are addressing the cases, and hopefully we can get more, uh, more meaningful results from the, uh, the cases that we do send to court.
Thank you Brian. Briefly on that, um, I believe all of you might have got an email that I asked Susan Ford off about uh, individual on the South Side of Town, um, where I did include Brian, Stephanie, uh, Mandy, Larry, Vern. Um, just kinda, I would really want the city to come up with a clearly defined protocol or procedure, so everyone from the PD knows where it goes after that, so once it goes to PD, if it goes to Brian, you know, it's gotta be hitting each step, everyone's gotta be checking everybody, every box, and hopefully we can, you know, like um, Larry says, be the, the most strict, you know, city around here, um. So, that should be doable. And I would also request, Cheyenne, that you guys, I'm not sure what you, um, I'm sure that the Police Commission meetings are tou- touching on these topics, but uh, you know, I, I would uh, request that you guys um, probably join that conversation as well, um. Okay. City Clerk, Treasurer, Devin. Okay, moving on to Consent Agenda, which is our list of bills, communications, minutes of previous city council meetings, October, or payroll and overtime. Unless there's any corrections, I would look for a motion, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion? Support?
Thank you Jed, thank you Travis. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business, any unfinished business? We move on to uh, new business. Jim Johnson, Larry will be taking on Jim's items here. Apologize.
Councilor Vodke, if this doesn't please you by time, I don't know what else will please you. Yes. Thank you Council, um, Jim's mother passed away after a hundred years old, so Jim's not with us tonight, but our thoughts and prayers are with him and he speaks about how old he is in that regard, his mother was a hundred years old. Anyway, um, and before you, uh, first, uh, Resolution Number one zero two four dash eight five, and that's setting the assessment hearing, uh, for um, November thirteenth at five PM here at City Hall. And that's to declare the cost of the assessments of the project, ordering the preparation and then the proposed assessments and um, for the street and alley reclamation project. So, very good project, went very well, um, no complaints, basically a hundred percent complete. So, this is just formality and uh, setting that assessment hearing, so. With that, I ask you for your support for Resolution Number one zero two four dash eight five.
Alright, Council?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Travis. Thank you Marty. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then uh, next, Resolution Number one zero two four dash eight six, same, uh, setting the assessment hearing for the Fifth Street South Infrastructure Project. Um, that is um, declaring the cost of the assessments, ordering the preparation, and then the proposed assessments being on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four at five PM here at City Council Chambers again, so. Again, that Fifth Street project's going pretty well, right, bumping up against winter here, so.
Thanks.
Uh, with any luck, by the end of the week, here or early next week, you'll see paving down there.
Alright, Council, look for a motion to approve Resolution one zero two four dash eight six and set the assessment hearing for five PM at November twenty-seventh.
Make a motion?
Thank you Jed.
Support?
Thank you Travis. Any further discussion?
Oh.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I was trying to set my calendar.
No, sorry. Uh, thank yous again, and then um, and then thirdly, under Jim was the pay application number one for the street and alley reconditioning, went very well, again, I believe there's only gonna be this in a second, so. There was no change orders, there was no um, unforeseen circumstances, that type of thing, so. Um, and then there was a, and, and to that point, there was a recommendation to lower that retainers two percent, which is fairly normal. And then, so of the total project, the pay uh, application here is two hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
I'll make that motion this way.
Thank you April. One second. Thank you Marty. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And moving right along, um, we've been talking about it for some time, on that ninety thousand dollar stormwater management grant that we rewarded. Very thankful of that, especially after the winter, or it's the winter, uh, winter's coming. After the summer we had and those flood, June floods, so. Uh, with that, is work order one and two, and um, I said we'd be preparing these, putting them together. Um, uh, with that, it's mostly data gathering and um, getting some numbers and elevations, things like that, and some real good hard data, uh, so we can work on these, uh, on tasks into the winter here, so. Uh, with that, you know, certainly Councilor Halverson has much history in this, and I would field any questions that you or they have, or me and Marty afterwards even, so. With that, I ask for your support in um, in work order one and two. They were also, um, they were pre-approved by our grant administrators, and then uh, at ninety-five percent, and the five percent then comes out of the sewer budget, so it doesn't affect the general fund, not like that, so.
I had a, I got a question. Okay, so for pay application number one, um, you did state that, uh, no more than twenty-five thousand dollars, correct?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
At pay application number two?
Work order number one and two, yep.
I'm sorry, work, no more than twenty-six five hundred.
Yeah, cannot exceed.
So, that brings it to fifty-one-five? Do you know what you're doing with the other?
No, so we'll get the data and then we'll come up with tasks. Yeah, and you know, like, there's many different things being considered, like, uh, the pumps, being able to actually pump more wastewater than we are now. Um, there's lake level, there's foliage around the lake, uh, the ability to, we think we're, might have some ability to actually drain water in the lake, um, beforehand, when those big storms are coming to get capacity, so, but like a possible dam that's city-controlled, so there's a lot of different things. And this is like, talking to DNR folks, talking to all kinds of different people and, and you know, we're gonna get elevations of manholes where we believe the most ionized was happening, things like that, so. Yep. It's mostly data gathering.
The Council, I'd look for a motion to...
Marty, you had a comment, yeah?
I would strongly recommend that we evaluate flooding, especially there.
Yep, exactly, yep, it's all part of it, being able to drain that water faster, like we talked about. That water comes down and hydraulically hits the lake, the lake level comes up so high, it has to push through, we're may be able to dump this water and get that water off the streets quicker, so.
Well, motion to approve work orders number one and two, not to exceed fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Make the motion?
Thank you Jed.
Second.
Thank you April. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Larry. We're not, we're not gonna tell Jim how quickly that happens.
I might.
Larry rambled on, happy. Bridget, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, on page twenty-eight, uh, my first item is the Long Year Lake, uh, Park Master Plan. Uh, while you're paging through and looking at the, the images and uh, the detail on, on this master plan, I'll just read through my, my um, memo here, because I, I think it highlights everything that is in the plan, and then I can answer questions, but I'm looking for approval of this Long Year Lake Master Plan. It's been sitting with the Parks and Rec Board for the last year plus, maybe a little bit plus. Um, and we've been working with Kim Lee Horn on the design of the master plan. Um, and it has gone through several revisions. Staff and board are presenting this plan for your review and proposal. Items proposed for final upgrades on this plan include, um, which is not demonstrated in the imagery that you're looking at. You see, um, you see, uh, angled parking, and what we, we are proposing is ninety-degree parking, so that image needs to be updated, but we are looking at ninety-degree parking stalls versus the horizontal. And then a language, a basic language change to define, uh, the drawing of the pump track to, just to state that it's conceptual, because with any pump track, it's really the builders of the pump track that create the exact design of it. Um, and then, the plan details amenities and the purpose behind every park feature, most notably are, um, the design features that include multi-generational features, uh, that is, um, just so everybody of all ages can access the park and use, use different, um, features of it. A focus on exercise, green space, a top track combined with multimodal features for both bikes and skateboards. So that little pump track in the center of it would accommodate, uh, skateboards as well. Natural features, aesthetically pleasing landscaping, a shelter for inclement weather, a dock to expand the park space into a new and currently underutilized location, um, which is that island. And then dedicated pickleball courts to accommodate for future tournaments. Um, we, we've been lucky to have Shelley Valentini, who is an avid pickleball player on our Parks Board, so, uh, she worked hard on making sure that the design, uh, fit the, the requirements for tournaments. And then, um, that added parking for high-volume usage, which I think quite often would be when there are pickleball tournaments. And then the beach continues to be under review, um, you know, with any determination on, uh, water quality studies. Um, but it offers a beach that it can accommodate kayaking and stand-up paddleboarding or canoeing, so, uh, folks and residents could bring their own personal, uh, watercraft, or we could have kayak rentals there. And this would be a phased project, of course, because there's a lot of, um, a lot of components to this master plan. So, I can answer any questions you might have on...
The only thing that popped out was when you first started the parking. Were we talking about the parking and changing from?
Yeah, so if you look, let's see, what page does it have, the big map?
The very last page.
Yeah, the last page, forty-six, um... Yeah, the last page, forty-six, um, you can see horizontal parking there, where you'd come in at an angle, where you'd have to enter from the, the street, what street is that, Sixth Street, maybe, um? But we, we realize a lot of people pull in from, um, the Eighth Street Northeast, and so therefore, the plan, we kinda determined it should just be ninety-degree parking, so you could just pull right in from both directions.
That's a whole master plan, I love the dock to the, to the island.
Yeah.
I would do that first, I'd fund it if I could.
Oh, we could move that to the first phase, 'cause I love that too.
I, I was looking at some pictures on the Minnesota Stormwater Society, and there used to be, eh, two ways to get across the bridge. There was the main bridge and then another path that went across on the.
Nice.
Where's it, the east, you know, northeast side.
Yeah.
Coming across too, so that was kinda cool to see, but I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, were you gonna make something, like, some of the playground, uh, accessible for people with disabilities, like, in wheelchair, disability?
Yes.
Something like this, uh, making sure we have larger walkways.
Yes, so, th- this current plan is, it's, it's not that detailed, uh, where it's just a conceptual plan, it doesn't have any decisions made on the types of playground equipment that would be swapped out, so, yeah, I, that is kind of how I think all communities are, are, are going, it, because accessible playgrounds can be used by everybody, and so, yes, we, we'll make sure that the majority of the components would be.
Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, this is our master plan.
Well, good work to you and the rest of the board and, and committee. I, counsel, any other questions?
Is there any, uh, talk about cleaning the lake itself, like, the grass, we can chop it down or do something like that to clean it up around the shores?
Like what was brought up earlier today, the, the shoreline, or wait, what did you?
Well, not the shoreline, but it's like all the grass that's in the lake.
Oh.
Can we, I guess they have grass choppers, if you go from, use other lakes, some of the natural, I guess, and go in and clean it up, if that's an option, we could look into it.
Yeah, I know that there are some regulations, but I also, uh, do believe, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but that we have some ability to clear what's at the surface level and up.
Yeah, we're gonna re-determine that over, with the study, because it's been four years since we checked on it.
Okay.
I think this farm water permit, I'll add a lot more information to that, though, or farm water.
It's farm water now, okay.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
Good work. It's really great.
Yeah.
Excellent. I mean, I, I'll advocate for the pickleball courts, you know, if you've been to Hibbing and saw their complex, it's pretty phenomenal. Um, and we have a avid community here, and the struggle for them is gonna come to with when they lose their ability to use the bond.
Mm-hmm.
In the winter, there's gonna be more demand for this, once the weather does improve, so, um, you know, I would advocate for that to be at the top of the list also.
Yeah, and to, notably for any tennis player in Chisholm that might be listening, uh, the pickleball courts that exist at Memorial Park now would be overlaid, so you could do both tennis and pickleball there, that has been what we've discussed.
Very cool, good work.
Alright, counsel, unless there's anything else, I look for a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Longyear Lake Master Plan.
I like the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On page forty-eight is, um, a resolution to, I, I'm requesting permission to apply for grant funding from Saint Louis County's CDBG Grant Program for Longyear Lake Phase One, uh, in the amount of three hundred thousand. Um, and this, the Phase One, it, in its conceptuality, right now we're thinking it would be the pickleball courts in Phase One, and then, um, we do have the current funding, uh, from IRRR for the pump tracks, so that could be, um, worked in as a match for that Phase One, so we're looking at both of those features being the priority.
Counsel, I'd look for a motion to, uh, approve resolution one zero two four dash eight seven.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed.
Support.
Thank you Travis, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, thank you, on page fifty, um, I am requesting, uh, that counsel, uh, approve this, uh, limited-use permit contract. Um, back in August of twenty-three, counsel authorized the execution of the permit between the City of Chisholm and the Commissioner of Transportation, uh, with the state of Minnesota, and this is the ATV trail that parallels the, um, Masabi Trail that goes under one sixty-nine, that heads on that east side of, of Redhead Mountain Bike Park, um, basically now we have the contract and we just need to get signatures on it, so that we're utilizing that space appropriately.
Perfect. Alright, counsel, um.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, good evening.
Alright, good evening, everyone, um, I've recently had quite a few community members reach out and ask about dates for Bringing Light to Chisholm. Um, for those of you that, who might not be familiar, um, this event was started by the Chisholm Downtown Revitalization Committee with support from the city, um, in twenty-twenty during the pandemic. Um, the event took place on the night of the winter solstice, after a lo- after nine long months of isolation. Um, the goal was to unite community members and local businesses to bring light to downtown Chisholm, and giving everyone some, something to look forward to during some of the darkest nights of the year. Um, the enthusiasm for this event is still very much alive, um, over the years, there's been continued support from community members and business to make this, uh, continued success, so I'm here tonight requesting that we continue our tradition of bringing light to Chisholm. Um, included in this request would be to declare a citywide festival with the closure of the one-hundredth and two-hundred blocks of Lake Street from five PM to eight PM on Thursday, December fifth. Um, in the past, the evening has included a book reading at the Chisholm Library with Mrs. Claus, a visit from our animal friends at Cook's Country Connection, pictures with Santa and friends, a sleigh ride, in addition to children's activities, including cookie decorating, face painting, and some more, as. And while I haven't had the chance to confirm all the activities, um, with our partners, I would anticipate some similar events, um, this year. Um, also anticipating participation from local business, which in, which could include some outside, um, beverages, decorations, lights, and bonfires, so with that, I would ask for your support.
Oh, a, a great event every year, so, thank you very much.
Yeah.
The counsel, I'd look, uh, for a motion to approve Bringing Light to Chisholm and preparing a citywide festival.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Good work.
Thank you Travis. Any further discussion?
I did see some communication on Facebook that there might, they are looking at people adopting windows downtown Chisholm.
Yes, oh, thank you for bringing that up.
So that all the windows downtown Chisholm are also decorated.
Yes.
There was a pretty good discussion thread, uh, so that was pretty cool, so.
Yeah, yeah. That is cool, so we do have some people stepping up and hoping to sponsor some windows, so if you know anybody that loves to decorate and wants to sponsor a downtown window, let us know, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, excellent. Alright, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries.
Okay. And then really quick, April just wanted me to remind everybody that we do have the winter gear drive at the library still, so that's happening through, um, November seventh, that we'll be collecting items, all sizes, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I, uh, grabbed this one from our ambulance director, um, so what you have here would be a contract with Minnesota North College, um, which allows EMTs and paramedics to ride along with our ambulance service, um, the college has been very supportive of Chisholm Ambulance Service in the past and fostering ride-alongs, it's proven to be a great way for students to test, drive, or possible future employment sites. Um, and also this is a place for them to, um, you know, get a little bit of experience and make sure that this is what they wanna do, and Chisholm is, is a great place to do it, so, I would look for a motion to, uh, support this contract, and allow me to sign it with Minnesota North.
Question is.
But. Yes.
So, with the, with the ride-alongs, can you, can you just briefly explain, uh, they, do these people just, uh, ride along? Or do they actually test drive the equipment?
Nope.
The way it's worded, it kinda, I just wanna, some clarification.
Right, as, as far as test drive, that just means they're, they're test driving, the role and responsibilities of being in the back and observing our technicians and our paramedics, um, they're not working in the hands-on capacity unless, you know, it's deemed appropriate by our, you know, reputation of back. But for the most part, they are just observing, you know, observing, yeah.
Observing?
Yeah.
Do they have to sign, like, some disclosures or other things, the laws and all that, kind of, ones like that?
Um.
Well, I'm sure they do, with the college.
I'm just, I'm not sure, you know.
With the college itself, yeah. To the college, they do all that, yeah. To the college, yep.
Yeah, follow all the, the laws and regulations and.
Yeah.
A, a lot of our medics are around the area too, Mr. Mayor, they're, uh, they're preceptors too for the college, so we have medic, we have medics on our service that are preceptors for the college, so it gives it, them ability, the students to get college credit and hours and time and skills too, so.
Yeah.
This is what, this is really great.
Yeah, so even, so Jed here's going through his paramedic program, and he has to do ride-alongs in different communities, and the ambulance kinda in the same capacity also, so.
I appreciate that information.
Yeah. Counselor, was that, uh?
Motion.
Yeah. Thank you Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, schedule a working session for public participation meeting, uh, November twelfth, five PM, for MinDOT seventy-three corridor, uh, public informational meeting. So, this date was laid out for us, um, you know, what was available for, from MinDOT. So.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Give me one second, I'm just gonna throw this in my calendar. And this will be held at the, um, Tina Center. Okay. Next up, we have, um, contract for building an official zoning administrator. Get caught up here a little quick. So, everyone that was at the, uh, council meeting last week, and then we broke into our closed session, um, so we just put, uh, it in writing, and we're looking for the approval. So, unless there's any further comments, questions, concerns, I'd look, uh, for a motion to approve the contract for building official zoning administrator.
I just have one question, I wasn't here, so forgive me, but, the, uh, the terms for this, is it, doesn't, it doesn't start till October twenty-twenty-five, is that accurate?
Nope, so, uh.
That's what this one says, that's what this one says, that's why I'm asking.
That's what it says out here.
Shh.
Or is it January one, twenty-twenty-five?
Nope, so that should be twenty-twenty-four.
So, it's going back.
I'm sorry, that's my error, it should be October first, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
And, and Mayor, if I may, uh, just to address that a little bit further, so the, uh, the use of the, uh, January dates in the redline version springs from that, if you look at paragraph one on page seventy-nine, just above, we had inserted a term into the original contract to, to, to bump it a couple of months to align it with the, the January first date, to put, to line it up with the, um, appointment periods, but, uh, as the, as the change of amendment has occurred, it's, it's really all the same.
Okay. Good catch. Yeah, we could've got a free year, but. Whatever, you know?
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you Travis. Alright, with that correction of, uh, the commencement date, I would look for a motion for approval.
I like the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Last thing on our list here, I was, um, Commissioner, uh, Venema from Mytessa County had reached out to me last week and asked if we would be interested in joining on to the, uh, the coalition to get the highway down, the double lane from Taconite to Pendley, uh, project that they've been working on from, um, extending from Calumet all the way to Nashwalk or Pendley, excuse me, uh, for about twenty-some years now, um, yeah, I, I, it's not in our county, it's not in our town, but it definitely, uh, drives the, um, you know, transportation of goods and services from Grand Rapids to Virginia, um, so it comes right down our corridor, and improving that, uh, transportation method for pedestrian or civilian traffic, and along with our goods and services, um, I think it'd be a good thing for us to promote and assist with, so basically, um, yeah, I'm not sure what they want for as far as, like, membership and to, you know, um, I was, my understanding, just to sign on as a, um, supporter, you know, for a letter of support, I know that, uh, they're looking for, um, membership and dues. I'm not sure how you all feel about that, but I, I believe, uh, our role should be, you know, reaching into a, a letter of support for when they take it to, uh, down with the state capitol, looking for that money, just saying, uh, that we do approve this, and that we are supporting that, but. If anyone feels any differently.
No, I, I think a letter of support is, you know, appropriate for us to do.
Yep.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, just, uh, have you send a letter of support, um, for them.
Yeah, thank you Travis.
Second.
Thank you, Marty, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The counsel asks now at this time if there's anything un-mislenious anyone would like to bring up, uh, and discuss, or, um, anything that you know right now that you would like to see on the next council meeting.
I think what you brought up, thing, your court report, getting more information from, um, their.
Yeah, definitely, um, you know, I was hoping that, obviously, they weren't gonna make it here tonight to give us, uh, you know, a rundown, but, um, yeah, we'll definitely either schedule a meeting or, um, you know, I, I request that Barrett come to the next council meeting with an update for us, and then we can move from there.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I guess, um, on that same note, uh, could we get an update from Vern on where we're at currently with Yule? And I don't think I've seen a contract in quite some time.
No, so we did, uh, have a, we gave him some suggestions to, to bring over to them at our, um, budget meeting, um, kinda s- where we were in line as far as like raises, and, and so they were supposed to bring something back, so.
Okay.
Well, uh, hopefully have something.
How about garbage, are you exploring garbage over there, Larry?
No, not currently, I think they got a pretty good contract.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, counsel, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Travis.
Second.
Jed, thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.